...to, uh, go into open session?
I'll make a motion to, um, go back into open session from recess.
A second.
All those in favor? So I believe we are up to item five, open forum.
Consent agenda?
Open forum.
You have got that there yet?
Open forum. Okay.
Nope, nothing.
Ms. Levesque, would you like to discuss in open forum?
Boy, there's really nobody here.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Eric?
Excuse me. Resignation, uh, boys' basketball coach, Tiverton Middle School, Michael Brigham. Appointments, Director of Finance and Administration, Elise Farr. Long-term elementary sub first grade, Fort Barton, Jennifer Lynn Peroni. Long-term social, I'm sorry, long-term social studies sub, Tiverton High School, Lauren Teeter.
Okay, there's no correspondence.
Mr. Dr. Larkin, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Michael Brigham for coaching the boys all those years and hope he stays around. Thank you.
I will second that. Correspondence done. Item number nine, policy development revision and review, revised communications policy, number 1075, second reading. Any discussion, uh, this is our second reading. Can I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Can I have a motion for approval of policy, headlights protocol policy, eleven zero eight?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And, uh, motion for approval of early graduation policy, one two six nine?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Wait a minute, you have a question?
Are these all second readings?
Yep, we can return to policy.
Twelve sixty-nine.
Okay, so yeah, we're just at the second, so any discussion?
Yes. Um, in that policy, I know that's the new policy, that's what I was looking for before.
No, it's actually, is it new?
It's new, it's a, it's a new.
Number.
It was a practice that we followed at the high school for a number of years, but it was never, it was mislabeled a policy. It was never a policy because the school committee never approved it.
Okay. That's right, you did mention that.
Yeah.
The only question that I had was, um, it's the procedure?
Uh huh.
And...
Under what section?
It's section, it's procedure, and I'm looking for my little note. The, um, student has to submit a request in writing. It's two, so it's procedure number two, to the principal before April first. And then it says, parent, parents or guardian must co-sign the request. And then I read through everything else. The parent never meets, never comes in and meets with the principal. I don't think they would know. Like, I just kind of have this...
We, we take the, uh, my, when I read it, I took it as if the parent's assigning the permission.
Right, right.
That if they had any questions, they would...
All right. That was my only question, is that I thought parents maybe shouldn't, at some point, meet with the prin, along with the principal, so that they know exactly what is expected of their child.
And again, we would convey it. I mean, again, policy, Attorney Robinson says we try not to be too...
Too specific.
Well, we could, like in six, could we just change to say the candidate and/or his or her parents will be invited to take part in an informal interview?
I wouldn't use the word "or."
Well, I, I don't want to require it.
But will be invited.
She's just saying invited.
Yeah, the candidate, yeah, or, I'm just saying the cand, oh, so the candidate and parents will be invited. Okay.
Parents or guardians.
Or guardians, yeah. The parent and/or, yeah, the candidate and/or guardians will be, or, and, no, or, will be invited to take part in an informal interview, so you've at least invited them.
Just, just, right.
Yep.
I feel better with that.
Yep, and we can certainly, we can make that change in motion as amended.
Okay.
It's easy enough to change.
Any other discussion? So all those in favor of the motion as amended? Okay. Old business none, new business monthly reports. Mr. Eric?
Yes, um, for my report, um, we had our quarterly meeting, we meet four times a year. The superintendents, um, meet down in Newport, uh, at the Career Center. We met back in September, uh, for our first meeting. We were, uh, given our enrollment numbers. They have gone down a little bit. The numbers you see here are lower than what they were when we started the school year. Um, we now have eleven students enroll full-time, uh, at Rogers and three are in the P-Tech program. Uh, our next quarterly meeting is scheduled for January tenth, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, renovations on the high school, uh, at the high school and the middle school. Uh, the roof, uh, has been replaced on the section above the science wing here at the high school and at the gym at the middle school. Uh, work is now progressing here at the high school, along the back, uh, set of classrooms here where, if you're familiar with the schools, where social studies and, uh, mostly social studies and math classes are located, and the music wing is being worked on at the middle school. Mr. Ashley, Dr. Dias Mitchell, uh, Mrs. Roach, Donley Roach and I meet every two weeks. We go to construction meetings with, uh, Al Borg. We, it's quite a big meeting, it's everybody involved in the, in the process. We get updates. We also convey to them when there are issues that we have concerns with, and they tell us how they have been addressed or are going to be addressed, depending on what the, the nature of the issues are. Uh, earlier this month, we had a building committee meeting, uh, uh, here at the library. We met and went through, or started going through the, uh, facility study that was done by, uh, RGB, and what we're in the, going to be doing, we're going to be meeting on December seventh. Uh, again, and we're going to be prioritizing the remaining items that haven't been addressed by the bond, because there's a significant number of items that are still outstanding. And since we're entering into the budget cycle, I thought it would be beneficial if we could get to the committee on December twelfth for our meeting, at least, uh, recommended list of things that the committee could consider moving forward if, if we ever wanted to pick things off, so we'd have a recommended list. Some of the things that we'll be looking at will be, I think I mentioned it before, uh, the cost of, uh, replacing all the ceiling tiles in both schools and all the lighting. Al Borg has proposed to us that they are willing to, uh, put up ceiling tiles in all the classrooms, um, new ones, uh, at no cost to us, we just have to pay for the ceiling tiles and the light fixtures. Um, so that's what we'll be looking at, because currently, what's proposed is when they put in the heating system, they'll take out all the ceiling tiles in classroom one, and then where they do the actual work, they'll get new ceiling tiles, but then the rest of the room will be the existing ones. So, I mean, that's what fifteen million buys us. Um, so what we're looking at, they gave us a, a estimate, uh, the other day, and we have to meet with the book building committee and look at it, and then see if it's worth recommending to the school committee for consideration. So that will be coming on December twelfth. Um, let's see, what else? Parking lot, uh, the, uh, the middle school parking lot, as you know, has been done. Uh, the security upgrades have been completed at Ranger, Picassett, Fort Barton, and my, and the central office. We are still waiting on the cameras, uh, and the doors for the entry system at the middle school. Uh, the, we have put in a set of security doors, if you come down those stairs, we now have the security doors in, so now we're just waiting for the camera and the buzzer so that we'll, we'll have that lock space like we have here. So we're working on that. And enrollment numbers, um, as you can see, we're, uh, we have eighteen hundred and eighty-three students registered. That number is slightly higher than October first of last year, so our enrollment has gone up, so, and that's the number that is used to determine maintenance of effort when it comes budget time, so that's why that number is important.
Yes, it is very important.
And again, we use, the, the number that we use and that's determined for maintenance of effort is total number of students that the district's responsible for, and that includes our out-of-districts. And we have sixty-four students right now who receive out-of, who have out-of-district placements. Any questions?
Yeah, I didn't want to stop you.
No, I'm all set.
Okay. On the, um, students at Rogers?
Uh huh.
So we have fourteen?
Yes.
Where is that compared to last year? What is that compared to last year?
I can get that for you for the next meeting, I believe it's slightly higher than where we were last year, but I'll, I can get that for the twelve, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay. Um, thank you. And then the renovations to the schools, the roofs in particular, I can imagine you're anticipating my question. We had to shut the high school down for a day in October, I think it was?
Yes.
When it rained?
Yeah, that, the first, the day we had to shut the high school down, that was a, that wasn't a result of the work being done, that was a result of strong winds that blew open the windows and water came pouring in, and also in, over here, in some of the classrooms here in the main office, where the roof is just, needs to be replaced, we had leaks, so it was a combination of both. The second time, um, we had two or three classrooms that had some minor leaks that were caused by, uh, some errors that they made while they were working on the roof, but we got those rooms cleaned up after one period.
So, now that we're heading into the worst weather of the year?
Uh huh.
We could potentially have a foot or two of snow sitting on top of the roof at any one time.
Right.
Are you confident that these roofs are not going to...
The work will stop. We're, they're only going to work, they're going to work as far as the weather allows them to. If it snows or whatever, they're, you know, they're going to have, that, once they get done with these two sections, we then have, we have to probably discuss, we haven't even discussed that with the builder, what happens after these two, this, this section here and the music wing are done. I know they want to proceed to the next sections, but that's something we haven't really addressed at great length yet, you know, taking account for the weather. I know they won't be able to work up there, but I don't know, um, you know, they're hoping to go into January if they can, because we're not, uh, we're, we're not using, uh, we're not sealing the roof, we're using rivets to put the roof in place, so they don't need it to be forty degrees or warmer, they can work as long as it's dry, they can, they can do the work.
Okay. Um, and then on enrollment, would it be possible to just see that in like a spreadsheet? Let's say the five-year trend by school?
Sure.
Um, and, you know, I'm noticing too, Picassett's got substantially more students than the other two, can...
That, that is, because that's, we try to balance off where the kids are, to send them to the schools that in their neighborhood, schools, um, and we have more kids that go to Picassett, that's where a lot of our kids are, in that, that north end.
I understand that, it's also probably one of the most challenging schools, and just as a, a parent, I'd like to see it more even. I mean, you'll never get it a hundred percent, but it just seems, you know, you've got thirty more kids.
Well, Picassett also has the bubble class, they have the extra first grade. They also have the BSP.
They also try to keep stuffs together.
They have the BSP program.
True.
So you have two, two, two classrooms that the other schools don't have, right off the, you know, at the beginning, so that's, that makes up for most of that, that number is because of the, that bubble class. Um, and they also, again, all our classes, when you look at the numbers, they're pretty much maxed out at all three schools.
So that's, that's the important thing.
We have no...
Physical space.
One of the issues that we had when, where they did the special needs study, was that if we, we have maximized all our space, as has Middleton, um, and we don't have any more room for our younger kids if we have to expand. I, I've said it before, um, when these housing developments, once they do get up and running, we do not have the space at the elementary schools. If the numbers just stay even, and you then drop a hundred, or whatever that project is, uh, by Little Bear, you drop those, that number of kids into this district, it's going to be a problem, and, I mean, I spoke to the planning board, sent letters, Sally's gone.
I got no time to testify about it.
And, um, you know...
We don't, we don't have the space without taking space that we now use for other things.
Well, it's true, but if you can, right now, you've got two-hundred-and-fifty-eight at Picassett, and thirty less at each, well, thirty less at Fort Barton, twenty less at Ranger, so that tells me that there probably is a way to absorb some more kids. How is it that one school can accommodate two?
Do they have more rooms, classrooms?
Is it physically a larger school?
Picassett, I believe, has a few more classrooms, because we, we kept most of Picassett, the old wing, and most of the old classrooms stayed, and we only added the, we added everything from, well, from the main entrance towards Main Road, which is all new, and we renovated those classrooms. Every classroom is used and utilized. We don't, there's not, it's, it's, I mean, I can give you a breakdown, but there's no room. This, we have seven-hundred-and-twelve elementary students, you know, in our three schools. That's, you know, that's a lot of kids. And we built them to hold, I mean, we haven't that, I mean, we could take over the libraries like we did when we had to put all the kids at, at the new Ranger school, but that's not what's best for kids, where we had to divvy up the remedial classrooms, we had to blow out walls to make that work, but we're, we're pretty close.
I mean, because you must, you have a bubble class of two, of what, like twenty-three kids, so that, now that takes that difference down to...
Two-thirty.
Two-thirty-five.
It evens them out with Ranger.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So you took, and, I mean...
So those bubble kid, those, that extra class must be in an extra classroom somewhere.
Yeah, it is, it's there, because that's where the space was, that's where we had the extra classroom.
Right.
And we have, uh, excuse me, we have one extra classroom, I believe, at Ranger that we're not using. That's, that could be used.
Well, you're right, Diane, when we did do this whole thing, we, we said we want to make sure there's parity, because at one point, there were so many...
I remember it.
There were so many kids at Picassett, and there were like seven kids at Non-Quidditch, you know, and that's not acceptable.
Right, when we had the seventy kids or whatever, Non-Quidditch.
Yeah, so, I mean, so we, we did, that was one of our main goals, and the original bond was with thirty-eight million to accommodate more classrooms, and then we could only get the thirty, so...
That's correct.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the thing about an extra classroom, that doesn't help when the kids are spread out K through, K through four.
No.
You're not going to just get all second graders or all fourth graders, so an extra classroom doesn't help you.
Plus, we also, we also have liberal residency policies that we try to keep families together, siblings together.
And that makes perfect sense, yeah.
And, uh, we try to, uh, we try not to split people up, we, we have people always wanting to move schools, and we have to say no, they want to be in school X, and they're in school Y, and we have to tell them they can't be, and, you know, all those things that you guys really don't get to see. Elaine remembers it from her days when we used to get all the calls, we still get them.
Okay. So Ms. Donley Roach?
Thank you. So, um, my report is, um, rather lengthy, forgive me. Um, just in terms of instruction and assessment, um, I want to highlight that you do have a copy of all of the names of the science units we're now teaching in grades K to four. This represents a pretty significant increase in the science content and the science practices that we are teaching. For example, in kindergarten, um, historically, there had been one science kit, um, and we now have three units representing life science, physical science, and earth science, um, in each, in kindergarten, as well as all the other grades. As we go upward, there are also engineering, um, units in grades three and four. What's, uh, great about the new approach to science in alignment with the standards that the state has adopted, is that there's really natural connectivity between, um, English, math, writing, reading, and so, um, there's a lot of practice with scientific texts and reference texts, and students are really working on reading and writing more in nonfiction in a integrated manner, so that is a wonderful thing, because they can make connections. I also highlighted in my report several of the software items that we have had in place in, in response to teachers' inquiries about differentiation and ways to support our students who need more intervention and support, so you have some information there about that. There's quite a bit in my report about professional learning that is ongoing, much of that is also in response to teachers' requests for training on topics such as science instruction, collaborative teaching, co-teaching, as we call it, and, um, we've also had quite a bit of meetings, um, I've led quite a bit of meetings with the specialists around ways to improve the way we document and intervene instructionally with our students who need additional support. The district FUSE team met recently, it was wonderful, we had students from the high school, teachers from the high school, teachers from the middle school, the two principals, myself, and we each spent, um, at least two periods shadowing a student, so it was a wonderful opportunity for us to see, see school through the lens of students, and then come together and talk about what we were, um, pleased with, what was engaging, what we could do better at. That team's going to meet again in a few weeks, and next week, our FUSE fellows, um, those are Microsoft-funded grant through the Highlander Institute, will be coming to do some informational meetings, um, at the middle and high school, to try and make sure all teachers understand the FUSE activities and make sure that they are aware that they can apply internally through an application process, to be, uh, coached by one of the FUSE fellows this year and next year. And many of our FUSE team members are really interested in doing that, so that teachers from other districts will come into their classrooms, help them plan, and coach them through using technology and personalizing instruction, so that every kid has a challenge at their own level. I also want to just briefly highlight that, um, the wellness breakfast, the statewide wellness breakfast, Mrs. Black was there, Ms. Paboe, um, and, um, we had representation from each of the schools in the district. Unfortunately, I didn't feel well, so I missed it for the first time in fifteen years, but most importantly, Picassett Schools, um, box program was highlighted.
Oh, nice.
Statewide, so that was really wonderful. The other thing that I have in my report is a brief summary of the state assessment results, and, um, it is briefed by design since most of the assessments have been sunsetted, but you'll see, um, in the report that our students' performance on the English Language Arts in Reading, Math, Science, and then the new in-school PSAT and SAT are all summarized there. To be brief, as I've been requested to do on this topic, um, we are above state average in all regards, and what you can see, I think, is that in many areas, we have made significant gains over time. It's hard to track trends, particularly on the park assessment, since it changed twice, we only gave it three times, um, and it's now gone, so there were some formatting changes between twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. There were some, um, tests, like the geometry tests, where Ride itself and Park itself said we didn't have enough data to make the results meaningful, and then, most importantly, our district moved to computer-based testing, um, which we knew would result in a natural dip in student scores, because our students weren't used to working that diligently on computers at the time. But I hope you can see again that, you know, we held our own, and the kneecap assessment, um, the last iteration of that science assessment, you can see some pretty impressive growth on our students' part. In particular, I want to highlight, um, our fourth grade growth on the kneecap science, and Fort Barton in particular, had the highest percentage of students who were proficient on that fourth grade assessment at sixty-seven percent over three years. This is not actually in the packet, but it, when you look at school-specific information at grade four, they increased by thirteen percent over three years, in terms of the numbers of students who, percent of students who were proficient. And you can also see at our middle school in grade eight, the level of proficiency rose, and, and Ride selected this metric of the difference in the numbers of, percentage of students who were proficient from twenty, two thousand eight to two thousand seventeen. On the last page of that report, at grade eight, that increased, um, thirteen point five percentage points. So, great growth there for our students. We definitely would have room to grow on these assessments, should they continue, we would have spent more time looking at all of the subgroups of the students, so students with disabilities, students with various demographic differences, um, since that isn't the direction the state is going, we did not do that work. But moving forward, we'll continue to work on that nonfiction reading, instructional reading, um, instruction in the reading and writing, and then, most importantly, in the foundational skills, those early literacy skills, because we still have progress to make there.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, oh, I thought you were calling on me to say something. Because I was thinking things that I was thinking I shouldn't really say, actually.
So what are we going to do now, Amy? What, what is the state going to have to do now?
So the new assessment, the RICAS assessment, is modeled on the Massachusetts frameworks, um, and then MCAS.
Explain what the frameworks are.
The frameworks were a way that Massachusetts teachers, um, spent a lot of time looking at the Common Core standards and making sure they made sense and were translated into instructional methods that were sound. So, rather than just having the standard in Massachusetts, they broke things out a little bit more into more of a narrative, and added, um, things back into the Common Core that weren't, weren't in the Common Core, things that teachers have always taught, but weren't reflected in Common Core. So some examples at elementary school are poetry, really is not emphasized in the Common Core state standards, but is in the Massachusetts frameworks. Telling time is not emphasized in the Common Core, but is a natural thing, we know we want to teach.
And the frameworks, if you read them, are more user-friendly.
Absolutely.
They make more sense to non-educators, and to educators, it's, it's less jargon, and it's, it's simple things, as Amy just described, in grades three or grade two, whenever they teach time, it's listed there, it says that, there's no, you know, you know, flowery language, you know, the use, you know, percentages or whatever, it's just tell time, and when you're a teacher and you, you look at those, it, it's more of an outline also for how, what teachers should follow.
Mm-hmm.
It gives them more direction than, uh, what we've used, but again, Mass has been working on it for twenty-plus years, and they've done a great job with it, and hopefully Ride will stick with this and not change again. This is the third one in four years, five years, right? Our third, we had kneecap, we had Park, now we have RICAS. And again, no, I don't, I just don't agree, you know, they say, oh, it's similar, you know, to what we had. No, it's not, it's not the same test, it's a different test, different assessments, so it's going to take districts some time to adjust, and again, with any new assessment, all the research shows it takes three years of data before you can get a real handle as to where your students are, are, so...
So a good thing there is that we don't have to change what we teach, there are some nuances, like telling time, that come back in. Um, our teachers spent time, elementary and middle school teachers, since the new RICAS is just at grades three to eight, spent time looking at the Common Core standards side by side with those Massachusetts frameworks, and we're relieved to see that they don't have to retool the instruction.
That's good.
Um, it should be a simpler test, it's a shorter amount of testing, and some of the things that, um, were uncommon and made the park test challenging, like having to look at three art articles in fourth grade and then find a theme and then write about your perspective on that theme, get a little... about your perspective on that theme, get a little simpler on the RIDE CAS. It'll just be looking at two articles and coming to an understanding of your point of view. So people have said it's a little more reasonable.
Are we going to be able to see the questions on these, do we know?
There are some sample questions. Massachusetts with the, M-CAS, of course, has many release tasks, as they call them. RIDE CAS is not necessarily going to be exactly the same, but they do have some samples out and more coming. And those are on the RIDE website. In terms of science assessment, Rhode Island is working with Vermont to develop a new science assessment. It'll just be those two states. They're recruiting teachers to participate in the development of that assessment now.
And why would Kneecap go away for science? No one would support it, or?
Kneecap was written to the old science standards and our state has the next generation science.
So rather than update Kneecap, they just said, let's just...
Right. And Kneecap, as you may recall, was Vermont, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island.
Yep, that's why it was...
But now just Vermont and Rhode Island.
Right. And the science, we were one of the first districts in the state to jump into the next generation of science. And our students, you know, were, I think, were in pretty good shape with that.
Yeah, I think we'll do good with that.
But again, we've standardized tests. They're not, the data, regardless of what the results are, alls you can develop are trends with the data. You can't, you can't use cohorts because it's, the test isn't designed for that. But even if you did, we used to be able to look at, under Kneecap, we could look at how the eighth graders did, but we could look back in the fourth grade, even though, because in our district, we don't have a lot of transient students. So you could, you could gain some information from that, but that got all thrown out when we left Kneecap. So all that data is gone. Now we, now we're doing another assessment. So we're starting from ground zero again and trying to develop, how do we need to adjust our teaching, our instructional strategies to improve student learning? And again, state, I've said it a million times, say it two million times, state assessments are just one measure of how well a student does. And...
Does the state at all, because certainly we can look at our own trends, but we can also look at similar districts, similar demographics, that kind of thing, and see like how we're scoring compared to them? Is RIDE encouraging at all cross-district sharing of strategies? I mean, are they getting better at that? Not really.
No.
Well, I think there's two things. In terms of the comparison, there is a dashboard where you can go and pick the two towns you want to look at and compare. And you can compare subgroups, so you can compare students of color with students of color in two different towns. I mean, there's a lot of information there.
We know who our major districts are, Burrville, by using free and reduced hotlines.
So if you saw something that was just wow, you could certainly reach out to those districts and drill down to that.
Absolutely.
Because what's not in those, that data, is what are they actually teaching? You may have similar demographics, and obviously, you want to go to similar districts to see how you compare. But you don't, you know, obviously, you need to then follow it up with, well, how, what are you doing for ELA? Why are your scores so good at middle school?
Right. And that's why I say it's just one more data point, other than trends.
Right.
And we also know that, we're talking about children, and they, you know, we expect and believe that they will all grow. So it's not so much what my salative score is, right? It's about where I started and where I grew to, regardless of whether I started at or below standard.
Which is why when they keep changing, it's so hard.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's a little harder to look at that because that has to be at an individual level to look at growth. And that's really what is important. I can walk in the door with all sorts of skills, and as a teacher, that may look good on paper as a score, but where did I start? Where do you support me to move to is really an important question. So we do do that work, and we do that ongoing with our data teams at each school. In terms of the next-generation science standards, I just want to make sure that the committee is aware that the new assessment will be online. Previously, it was more hands-on, and it was paper-based. It's also moving a grade level. So our science assessment traditionally in Rhode Island, at least for the last decade, has been at four, grades four, eight, and 11, and it is moving to grades five, eight, and 11. It's a shorter assessment, and it is online, which will be new for us in science. But it does mean there's a little more assessment at the middle school. And of course, the middle school is our only school where every student in every grade is assessed. So that does add a stressor there for our faculty, hopefully not for our students. The other portion of the report I didn't speak too much about, because it's the first year, so it's a baseline for us, is the PSAT and SAT. So you have that information. You can see that our evidence-based reading and writing scores were, again, above the state average. And our combined scores stay above the state average, but we have room to do better in mathematics. And that is something we continue to focus on as the strategic plan and your guidance recommends. It's the first year, too, where these assessments were given in-school at no cost for students. So we know that means that more students took it, and that wasn't a self-selected group. And that's important, just to recognize as you look at that first year of results.
So I was there when they first gave the first M-CAS at Jersey High School, and it wasn't a pretty day. So don't think they didn't change it and adjust it and go along, and they did. It wasn't, it isn't now what it was then because that was impossible. And probably five kids would have graduated. But they did work on the same thing, though. It's very simple. There's no tricks in it. We were trained during the summer, and what you taught, they tested. And that's the way it should be. And that's why it comes out so good when they do it. And I'm glad that, finally looking at that, that might be much better.
Amy, I mean, you're right. They're changing up the test. It's very difficult to do any kind of trend on here. But from what you know of our district at this point, what are our real pain points? What do we need to focus more than anything else? I mean, it kind of looks to me like ELA is chugging along okay. I mean, there's always room for improvement, but we're doing okay. Math, not quite sure. From what I see here and what I hear, you know, what are your areas of focus?
Definitely, math remains an area of focus, and the math and science practices. So thinking mathematically. The standards have been in place for quite a while now in terms of Common Core, and the new science standards echo the need to not just memorize the times tables, but know what to do to figure out, when do I need to, you know, do repeated addition, and how does that impact my results? So those practices and thinking mathematically are a big piece.
I'd like to, I'm sorry, if you go to page five, and this is kind of goes with what Amy was just saying. You look at the Algebra I scores, you'll see all district-wide, and then you'll see two of the middle school. That, that's our, for lack of a better word, our gifted and talented group of eighth graders. Scored extremely well, okay? Threw the, very, very well. Then in high school, the eighth graders who didn't take it are now taking Algebra I. That's what Amy's talking about. Right there is what you see, is we're targeting what we do well, we're targeting our high flyers very well. But for the average student, especially in math, just not at the high school, but also at the middle school, that's where our pressure, you call it a pressure point. That's something we're focusing on. I mean, that data hasn't, yes, we've used different assessments, but the trend has always been elementary does very well in math, middle school, not so well, but well, high school, statewide, drops off a cliff. Now, when we went to the SATs this year, which is a standardized norm test, recognized, so on, our kids did very well, and everybody took it. So the question is, if this data continues, one of the things I'll recommend to the committee is then it's, it could show that the assessment that the state's using isn't a good measure of students' abilities. Because if our kids are knocking it out of the park on the SATs, I mean, they can do better, but that's some of the highest SAT scores we've had in a long time. If that trend continues, then the question has to be asked, well, why are our kids doing well on that assessment but not well on the others? And that will, that's kind of like, it will be an ongoing story. It will depend, it will take another couple of years of data, but it is something to look at. But you, when you look at, you know, what we need to work on, we also need to work on literacy a little bit more at the high school. When we shifted to the PARK, there were some changes, as Amy talked about, that we have to work on. But overall, it's math, you know?
I'll be curious to see what the new RIDE CAS, math, like how close they got here.
Yeah, it's just, again, it's all data, and data's just used to make informed decisions and ask good questions.
I would add, too, that in terms of mathematics, three and a half, perhaps four years ago, just right at my arrival, the district adopted the most rigorous and standards-aligned math program, which is now referred to as Eureka Math. It was called Engage New York then. But teachers developed it in New York State. It's still ranked, you know, very highly aligned, and it's very rigorous and very authentic in terms of constructivist learning. It's hard to teach because many of us as educators were taught in a more algorithm, just do this, you know, cross, multiply, and divide, or whatever. And that's not how true mathematicians think things through, right? So it's a, it's a big shift. And we started that before we had full daycare, then moved to full daycare. And you can see that when you look at third grade, we're significantly above the average. As we get better at teaching that, you know, the hope would be that that carries forward. I can tell you that we moved to using Eureka Math in algebra courses here at the high school last school year, and many of the algebra teachers said that just the language that the students already knew and sort of had in a few years of work with had made a difference in that they were speaking the same language that the kids had had in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and they saw an impact in terms of the algebra.
Because our first all-day K group will be tested this year. This will be our first, that will be the first cohort, because it's been three years. Okay, one, two, now they're in three. I believe it's grade three. That, I believe that's the group we want to look at. And then you can, you can track them, too. I mean, there's a lot we can do.
If we have consistent data, we can track by those subgroups. We can track individual kids, most importantly, and you can track the growth of cohorts.
And one of the other pressure points, as I've done it, I've done this research on it, is our free and reduced lunch cohort. Those students in, especially in math, lag behind kids that aren't free and reduce hotlines significantly. And that's an area that we have to work on. We know who the kids are, and we have to continue to strive to support them because the data is, it's just eye-opening when you, when you look at it.
They're all born capable.
Of course, yeah. And there's some equity gaps there that we, we have to address. So we do have some new tools at the high school in particular in regards to math intervention that math teachers are excited about. And we also have reading intervention supports there for that subgroup of students. The other piece, to answer your question, Ms. Barnworth, is that, that informational reading and writing, which we, you know, we as educators historically, you know, tell stories, write stories. So getting away from, or adding on to just the narrative piece. So we're getting much better at that at elementary and helping students get used to reading and writing across content ERAs and getting teachers ready to do that and have kids communicate their understanding in multiple ways. I happened to be in the hallway today, and students were working together in the hallway because they had relocated. And Ms. Bolduc and I, you know, saw students doing videos to prepare for geometry class. So they were presenting information, you know, through speaking and listening and auditory and oral way for geometry class, and not having just one way to get to the answer or get to the right grade. It's something we're getting better at, too. And I think that instructional expertise is really going to show through eventually in terms of the support we give kids.
And we've also done a better job of tailoring our PD days towards what the teachers tell us they need. And having those three days...
Well, it's critical. You don't want to waste their time.
No.
We did that whole big study to ask what they wanted.
And we've done, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback the last couple of years since we've gone to those, especially since we've had the third day.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Memneys, you're up.
Just a few highlights. We've been busy all along. Middle school, we had issues with the lights in the parking lot, the big lights, they weren't working. So I went down, investigated, had to get a lift to find out what the problem was. It was the fixtures themselves let go. They're under warranty, so it didn't cost us anything. So there was a plus there. The high school, middle school building projects, on a daily basis, checking up on them, making sure we're not getting bamboozled as a sense, taking pictures as we need to. And everything seems to be going pretty good, except for the few water leaks we've had. But everything's going pretty good. They had a couple of emergency floods, that one flood you guys were talking about earlier. Stuff like that's happening on a constant basis, you know, not a constant basis, but when it comes up, we deal with the problem. And that's the only reason. Heating issues at Fort Bonne Pecasset, we're still working with that. Very tough to keep everybody happy. Somebody's warm, somebody's cold. Never happy. And then the recent project was refinishing the gym floors. We did all three. Had a little issues with them smells, but there are safe materials we put in the building. There is a slight odor. The odor's gone, but there's nothing I can do about that. They are up and using again right now, and we do it this time of year for a reason because it's basketball season. The winter sports have started. Basketball likes a stick floor, sticky floor, not a smooth floor, a sliding floor, like volleyball would like.
And, and we refinished during this time of the year, too, and just, and never had this issue. So it was just something that was really, we couldn't have anticipated.
No, it's the same firm we've used for years.
Yeah, it's...
We don't, I mean, I was up there with Mike, and I don't, we still don't really know what...
I don't know what really was wrong with it. That Pecasset was, I usually do every other year, so in two years, I'll make sure all doors are taped, we're exhausting outside at all times. That's about all I can do.
And we're going to do it when there's no students, so whatever, you know, because we have that Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Just shift the schedule a little bit so we can still accommodate basketball.
Right, right. And again, as a former basketball coach, that is true. You want the sticky floor.
Yeah, I figured that's why we do it.
You want that squeak as you...
It sounds crazy, but it's the squeak.
Yeah. I think it's probably safer, too.
Yes, it is, because you can stop and cut.
Shortstop.
It's a safety issue, too, because you can slide, pull hamstrings.
We don't want to injure students.
No.
And that's about it. Any other questions?
You've had your hands full.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're getting along, though.
Mike and I have many conversations.
All right. Item 11B, school committee meeting materials format, Ms. Barnworth.
Thank you. So it's been a year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You and the Donald.
You haven't quit yet.
We've been impeached. So, you know, the administration and the staff really diligently prepares for us a package for every meeting, and it's always quite full, quite well-done. And I've kept every one of those packages for fear of wanting to put my hands on something down the road and not really imagining how someday I'm going to have to shred all of it. But anyway, be that as it may. The milk carton that I've been keeping them in as my file cabinet is full, and my son weighed it for me today, and it weighs 40 pounds. And I said, you know, we, a number of municipal bodies... And I said, you know, we, a number of municipal bodies rely on laptops to reference materials during meetings. And I would like to propose or ask, if it would be possible, for us on the committee to have the option of having our materials delivered electronically via email in that perhaps we can access said materials via laptop at the meetings. Certainly wouldn't be mandatory. I think that, you know, we have the opportunity to use a lot less paper, clearly, helping our environment. We're going to use less staff preparation time. They don't have to put the little tabs on an electronic version. You know, the copiers, the printers, you know, even one less packet will be helpful. It also, you know, eliminates the need for Mr. Mendes to make the run around town to everybody's home. And I think perhaps that there are laptops that could be used for this purpose that are already here. I wouldn't necessarily recommend any kind of purchasing. I think, too, you know, we are encouraging the use of technology for our students, our teachers. I think it's incumbent upon us to, to take the lead in that regard. I think really, at the end of the day, it can save our district some money. I would like to have this as an option as a school committee member. And I would also, you know, ask and challenge the other members of the committee to think along the same lines and join me in this request.
Do we have scanners?
Yes.
Sophisticated scanners?
Yeah.
Because what I wouldn't want to see happen is just you basically throw the packet in, you scan it, and I can't figure out what goes with what. I mean, you're probably still going to have to have these in between so that you can kind of know what section is what. Do we have laptops?
Yeah, we can use the ones, Chromebooks. We can just take them off a cart and put them in front of everybody.
So we would get it via email and then somebody would have to download it onto the laptop so it's available when we get there.
Yeah, that's what David would do.
Or you could use your own personal.
Or you could bring your own.
Yeah, I was going to say, we can bring our own.
I mean, we can.
And I have it.
We could also have the agenda on the screen unless we have a presentation. We can just pop it up on the screen and people can follow along and then you don't need the paper. People.
That would be helpful, actually.
You know, people don't, oh, I need the agenda. Well, it's right up there on the screen.
I mean, someone would have to.
Yeah, have Mrs. Mendes.
She, you could sit over there.
So you're paying attention now.
Look along. Yeah, no, I think that's a great, either, you know.
I mean, we'll have some.
Either our own computers, like, you know, our own iPads.
There'll be some growing pains with it, just, you know, how we present it to you guys. It's up to you guys. I mean, I can do whatever you want.
Oh, yeah, I would never try and impose my will on anyone. But I, I would, for, for myself, prefer to go that way. Accumulation of papers killing me.
If I like, if I bring my own iPad.
It works. No, you'd be able to bring your own, give you the password and use it right. I use my phone. I just, when we had our break, I was using my phone. No, I'm just saying, I was using, I mean, but I was using the Wi-Fi to.
And you're right, I think that's a great idea to have that up there and just have it go while we're going. That's a really good idea.
Just seek direction.
I don't know. I like my paper.
That's okay.
I mean, I.
What it will be, what it will be is there'll be a hard copy. We need a hard copy for our records, anyway.
Yeah.
And what we'll end up doing is we'll end up scanning it. I mean, we'll do a packet and it's easy to scan because we can send it to multiple people.
Everything's pretty much all electronic documents.
You know, so if we do, for example, whatever's in this packet, we would just scan it and then hit send and off it goes.
I like writing on, I like taking notes on things I might have questions or.
Yeah, so you can still get a paper copy.
I just need to know, I guess you guys would have to let us know what your preference would be and then we can.
Jerry, do you like the electronic version or the?
I don't know, I haven't tried it. I guess what I would, maybe what we could try doing, at least for the next couple of meetings, is you send it to us electronically, but also give us the paper copy and then people can say, you know, I don't need the paper copy anymore. Ms. Black, do you have any thoughts or?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I would, I prefer my paper because it's easier for me.
Well, there is, you know, there are.
But I think it's a good idea, though.
I think there's advantages to doing the electronic copy, but there's, could also be disadvantages if things aren't working.
So as someone who's been forced to sort of shuffle through, you know, a couple hundred pages of an electronic medical record, it, there's something, you know, people don't talk about the challenges that you face trying to kind of keep things organized electronically as opposed to by paper. And I think that's something that is lost on the youngsters of today.
You have to have sophisticated scanning.
Well, that's the thing.
We're completely paperless, but everything's bookmarked, everything.
It's how it's organized, that's actually.
That we don't have. By scanning, I mean, we can scan these things and send them.
So I think we need to see how it, you know, present it to us as you can electronically and we can sort of see if we can work with that. Because if it is kind of, everybody kind of buried in their screens as opposed to having things in front of them, that may not be the most progressive thing, actually.
So I'm sending both for the December 12 meeting?
I would say for the next couple of meetings, let's see what happens.
Do you want both, Diane?
I don't need both.
I don't need both.
Okay, so three will get both and two will get all electronic.
So are we expected to bring in our computers?
It's up to you guys. I can have them.
I would personally like to have one of the school district ones because my laptops.
I can just have it right in front of you. If you can use it, if you want to use it, you can use it. If you don't.
Well, that's what they do on the town council, really. They have the option because they gave out the computers and some of them bring their, two bring their computers and the rest still have their paper, so.
It may not be for everyone.
That's right. But it's good, though. It's a good idea. Because I have a whole room now, Diane. I know what you mean. One of my children's bedroom is now my file room.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, it is.
It does, it accumulates pretty.
It does, very fast.
I shred them immediately.
Do you?
Yeah, because it's all taped.
It's true. You're right.
Okay.
But you're right. Let's, let's give it a shot. Diane and I don't need the paper copies, but if you want to deliver it to the other three and then I guess just have.
And I'll talk with Dave and we'll have five laptops in front of you.
And I, I'm going to try my iPad, but just in case, like Elaine says, there are technical differences, have one here for me. And if I find it's not an issue, then that can go away, too. But I love the, I like the idea of having it up so people can see it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That would be helpful.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay.
All right. Item 11C, Survey Works Forum on Shared Leadership.
I just wanted to call everyone's attention to a program that Ride is running this year in response to the Survey Works. I attended a shared leadership forum at Narragansett High School a few weeks ago and, as did Ms. Donnelly Roach in the evening. I really was quite impressed with the format. It was Commissioner Wagner and a panel of both current and prior teacher, principal and superintendent of the year. Folks who gave their, what it means for them to, to have a shared leadership structure in their own schools, in their own districts. What I liked about it a lot was that it was an interactive type of discussion. There were audience members participating in the discussion as well. I came out of it learning a few things about how other school districts do things. And certainly with, you know, some, some hope that, you know, perhaps as we continue to develop here in our district, that some of these ideas that are being shared, we can embrace as well. I, I loved some of the real-life examples, you know, and even to the point where one of the school districts, you know, it's not just sharing leadership amongst staff versus administration, but it even goes to the level of the students, sharing their experiences with, in a leadership type of role. They may not even realize it, but that's what they were doing. And I know when Ms. Donnelly Roach spoke about shadowing some students, that was another example where a teacher had actually, I mean, literally shadowed a student from the time they got up in the morning to the time they went to bed that night, of course, with the parent's permission. But they followed this student the entire day to see what it's like to be that student. And that was, you know, again, an example of shared leadership, shared learning. And there's a lot to be said for that. I mean, it's, it's not a, a technical, a technical pursuit. It was just simply, you know, interaction amongst each other and we can all learn from each other. So I thought it was great. These Survey Works forums are planned on a monthly basis this year, although I don't see one planned for December. They had one in October, November, probably skipping December. You know, it's open to the public and I would, you know, highly recommend attending if you can do it.
That's good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Announcements.
The joint meeting of the Town Council Budget Committee and School Committee is at least tentatively planned for January 11th right now. It's the only announcement I have.
I will be doing a, going to a meeting with the Budget Committee and the new members on December 14th. They've been invited along with Town Administrator, Mr. McGreevy, to, I guess, come and meet and greet with the Budget Committee on December 14th. January 11th, as Dr. Larkin mentioned, is the tentative joint meeting. And if you go to the Ride website, you'll notice Tiverton has been recognized. We've participated in the Rhode Island Reads Campaign, where teachers list what books their students are reading. And a number of our teachers at Pecassett have been recognized and kudos from the Department of Ed for what we've done. So I want to thank Mrs. Delcourt and the staff at Pecassett who chose to avail themselves of that.
That's good.
Anyone else?
Dr. Larkin, the president of council, just texted me and would like you to call her about that joint meeting when you have a minute, okay, to confirm that we can go. Okay?
Wow.
Okay. She's got my number. That's creepy fast.
Real time.
Because then all three bodies have to post the meeting.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. Is there anybody that can't make the 11th? If that's what their question is?
I don't think I can. I'm not sure. I have to see within the next few days. Probably by Wednesday.
Is we have to have a meeting, a forum? Or we just need, I guess we're not a body with a level of forum.
You, well, a few years ago, one of the bodies didn't have one.
The Budget Committee didn't have it.
Yeah, and we played through, so. They just can't vote. I mean, not that any votes are taken.
No, no.
I know, it's.
It's a statute.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, those are normally.
And that would be here?
It would be here.
It's right at this library usually. Yeah, that's what they said last night.
If I may, just a couple announcements. On Thursday morning, Ride is having an event related to their new draft standards for professional learning, which do align pretty well to national best practice and, and common sense. So Mrs. Riley and Ms. Wardell and myself will be attending an informational session about that to give our feedback on those draft standards since we serve on the District Professional Development Committee. And then the following week, I believe it's December 8th, there's an event at the RISTI, Rhode Island Technology Group, regarding the new national standards for administrators in terms of technology and education. So I will be going to that and no doubt, one or two of the principals will come, too. But you're all welcome if you're interested in either of those events. I'm happy to announce, yeah, we didn't make it in time for the agenda, but the Van Buren Foundation has granted us, pardon my eyes, $67,000 for the proposal I wrote together with Mr. Ashley, Ms. Elwell and Mrs. Crager, to have our high school continue the work on core values, social-emotional learning and best practice in integrating technology. So that'll be between now and. You'll accept it officially next time, but it'll be between now and 2020. So it's a nice, ongoing, long-term planning grant. So thrilled to have that.
Very good.
Elaine, do you want me to try and find another date if you can't make it on the 11th? Because they're going to probably want us to.
No, just say yes.
Say yes, okay. All right.
You don't need a quorum, so.
It's not a lot of fun, that meeting. Okay.
It's a lot of dour faces.
Yeah. Pretty much. All right. Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?